Good evening. We're gonna call the regular meeting of the City of Crescent City City Council to order. And Mr. Black, do you want to report out from closed session?
Yes, Mayor. No final actions were taken in closed session.
Very good. Thank you.
I just wanted to be absolutely sure before I said that. So I reviewed the entire closed session.
Yeah, Mexico.
My mind.
Mexico on the brain.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everybody this evening that's here in person. We have a couple special occasions this evening. And then I would like to also welcome those that are watching by live streaming. We're happy to have our live streaming system back and running. And Madam Clerk, would you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Shalong?
Here.
Councilmember Enya?
Here.
Mayor Proton Murray?
Here.
And Mayor Slert?
I'm here. Thank you. And Mr. Enya, would you lead us in the Pledge of Legits?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have a couple pieces of business that I'd like to address up front here before we get going on the agenda. Number one, our city attorney, Mr. Black, will be sitting in tonight in two seats as the city attorney and as the acting city manager in lieu of Janine, who is on a well-deserved vacation that she had planned before she accepted the role as interim city manager. And while I'm mentioning her, I want to salute her and her unbelievable efforts in behalf of the city and the community during the recent tsunami events. One of the hardest-working ladies in America. So my hat's off to the great job that she did. Also, I'd like to salute, just in general, before we get started here tonight, the effort that everybody at the Command Center and in the city and the county made to get us through this tsunami event, which everything I've seen ran just unbelievably smooth, and it was because of everybody's participation. And I actually want to salute the public for following orders and evacuating as they were requested. And it was a community-wide effort, and we'll hear more about that later this evening in a couple presentations. I also, I guess, would like to propose that we have a moment of silence for Mr. Dustin Weber, who was lost in the tsunami. So if we can take a moment, please. Okay. Thank you. Alrighty, so we'll move to acknowledgements.
Mayor, before you move on?
Please.
I'd just like to also comment on the tsunami event and how proud I am of our police and fire departments. Wanted to take that chance to say that since many of you are in here tonight. I have heard nothing but just wonderful things about how hard you worked, how you work together, how, you know, you just, you know, I was, I was just really pleased, and I just really want to thank you. Every single day, I'm just thankful that I live here in Crescent City. So, thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, so looking to acknowledgements, item number two is recognition and presentation of retirement plaque for Mr. Gil Estrella. And so Gil, if you'd like to join me down in front?
Or you could just stay on with the city.
This is a flag that the city took together for Gil, and I need them to clarify, it's 32 years?
32.
And I'm trying to remember what was happening in my life 32 years ago when I became my 36-year-old daughter, about 39-years-old. So that seems like a lifetime ago. So for anybody to have that kind of commitment and dedication to their organization, not only the city, we're lucky to have had Gil here. So this is a flag that the city put together, says Gil Estrella, best wishes for a happy and healthy retirement. City of Crescent City, 1978, 2011. Congratulations.
32 years, I have lots of friends, I'm a little lassie, I'm not glad I'm up for the scale.
Glad to have you. Thank you very much. Enjoy your retirement. Instead of waiting on the city bar.
Maybe I'll skip home and go back to you. I'm gonna miss all of my friends, though.
Counsel, would you like to offer any other thoughts?
I'm just gonna be careful what I say. 32 years ago, I was a very young police officer working here in Crescent City. And there'd be some times that I would take my patrol car to the yard. Gil was a really young mechanic, too, and he always fixed them. And sometimes he fixed the cars without the city even knowing that they were damaged, and I thank you for that.
Thank you for your loyalty and dedication to the city. You've made a huge difference to us.
Not only has Gil been, obviously, a tremendous employee for the city, but he's raised a family here, and I know that his kids are especially proud of him as well. And, you know, they grew up here, and I keep track of a couple of them. But just, you know, you're just a wonderful member of our community, and we look forward to hearing good things from you during your retirement. Keep him busy. Thank you.
Gil, enjoy your retirement. We'll miss you. And unbelievable commitment in your entire career. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we'll move to item three, which is a proclamation designating Junior Miss Day. And I've asked Councilmember Shalong to make this presentation.
Thank you. Well, this is always an honor for me to have Deborah right here to join us this evening. I directed the Junior Miss Pageant for 10 years, and she took over for me, how many years ago now?
I think about eight.
Eight. I think it was 2003, maybe? Yeah. And she's just continued a wonderful program that serves our young ladies. And the one thing that I can say about the Junior Miss Scholarship Pageant is that it transforms these young ladies from giggly teenage girls into young ladies that are full of grace and confidence that will stay with them for the rest of their lives. And for a community member to pledge, you know, this isn't an event that takes three or four weeks. This is an event that takes three or four months of preparation. So, you know, my hat's off to you for continuing so that these girls can experience this program. So the City of Crescent City is proclaiming April 9th, 2011, as Junior Miss Day. Whereas the annual Junior Miss Program is sponsored by the Crescent City J.C.s, and whereas the Junior Miss Program is a scholarship program for young women in high school and is a competitive success-oriented event. And whereas these young women are not only evaluated on scholastic achievement, but on talent, self-expression, physical fitness, and a personal interview with a panel of judges. And whereas the Junior Miss Program is unmatched in its goal of encouraging young women and its emphasis on showing what our youth strive to accomplish today. Now therefore, be resolved that the City Council of Crescent City hereby proclaims April 9th, 2011, as Junior Miss Day and encourages all citizens to join in wishing success to every class of 2012 participants in their present and future endeavors and in recognizing the hard work, drive, and accomplishments of these young women, signed by our mayor, Charles Slert.
Very good.
Thank you.
Deborah?
I just wanted to think you guys have councilmembers for Junior Miss Day and fellow colleagues, too. This is a wonderful scholarship program, and these young ladies have worked so hard. And the Crescent City J.C.s, along with the local businesses and service organizations, we give away over $3,500 in scholarships to help these young ladies prepare for college. So thank you.
And where can people get tickets if they'd like to attend the event?
They're not available yet, but probably the week before. They can purchase them at the owner's office or at the meeting entrance.
Cool. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Deborah. Counsel, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
No. It's a fine program.
My family has attended and participated in the event, and it's a very worthwhile endeavor, and it does a lot for our community. So thank you for your contribution. Yes.
Did I?
Deborah?
Yeah. Wow. I'm getting old. And this young lady was in Junior Miss as well, and now she's back volunteering her time.
And maybe you're taking it over from me, so I'll play a few years.
Wow. No, I'm sorry. You have to do 10 years.
I can do one more than my mom's in the present, so I have to.
What's really cool about Junior Miss is the entertainment are the little girls usually from Dance Art Studio. So watch them entertain as like three- and four-year-olds, and then actually watch them come back and compete in the Junior Miss Pageant. Really makes you feel old, but it's very cool.
Excellent.
Yeah. Good.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay. At this time, we have actually a major occasion. It's item number four. We're gonna administer the oath of office for Police Officer Yang Lo. At this time, Chief Black.
Reserve Officer Yang Lo, would you please come up here? Try to find a way. Honorable Crescent City Council members, staff, distinguished guests. On February 4th, 2010, all of us were here to swear in Mr. Yang Lo as the Crescent City Police Department Reserve Police Officer. Tonight, we're here to swear him in as a full-time Crescent City Police Officer. Just to give you a little background on Yang, he is of Aung Mung descent and was born in Thailand. His family immigrated to Crescent City, which he was a young child. He is the third child of 14 children, which is probably good training for a law enforcement career. He continues to have a close relationship with his family, as you can see. He graduated from Del Norte High School in 1998 and continues to obtain his college credits towards a degree. Yang attended the College of the Redwoods Police Academy in Eureka and graduated fifth in the top of his class. When he was sworn in as a reserve officer next to our K-9 units, he has been the most requested officer by other agencies, as he's affluent in the Aung language. The year as a reserve officer, he has assisted us on numerous cases where his expertise was instrumental in solving the crimes. He has worked hard and donated his time without any type of compensation and at a moment's notice. We continue to be excited about having him on the department, because he possesses very good communication skills. And by having Yang Lo on our department is certainly reflective of the diversity of our community. He's enthusiastic and motivated to pursue a long-term law enforcement career with the City of Crescent City. He has informed me that his grandparents were in the military, who he resides with and continues to care for them today, and recognize that there's a pretty good-sized community of Aung individuals residing here. So he feels he would be an asset to the community as he understands the cultures and wants to help people to understand the different types of cultures that are here. You may find him very soft-spoken and speaks calmly, and has a quiet and reserved manner about himself. He has demonstrated to be polite and professional in his interactions with our citizenry. He has shown to have a strong work ethic and reliable member of the department. I'm very proud and pleased to be able to offer Yang Lo a position as a full-time police officer on the Crescent City Police Department. Yang will continue with his thorough and intensive 16-week FTO program with the Police Department, beginning with Officer Dominic Mello. Once he gets through his police training, I believe he will serve the public as a reliable and dependable police officer, one with strong sense of duty to the department as well as the community. So, that being said, Reserve Officer Yang Lo, would you please raise your right hand? Stay after me. Is your name?
I, Yang Lo.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
Or affirm?
Or affirm.
That I will support and defend?
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies?
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic?
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith?
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States?
And allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California?
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely?
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation?
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will well?
That I will well.
And faithfully discharge?
And faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter?
The duties that I'm about to enter.
As a police officer with the City of Crescent City?
As a police officer with the State of Crescent City.
Yang Lo has asked me to pin the badge on him. So with that, we're gonna take off the Reserve Officer badge. Did you bring the badge? Oh, looky here. Mayor, would you or the council like to say a few words?
Absolutely. I would follow up by saying it's, I think, a pleasure for the City of Crescent City to have one of its own become an officer. And although you said he's soft-spoken, he carries a big stick, I noticed. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Well, I'm just as excited today as I was the day that you became a reserve officer. I'm just proud to have you on the PD, and I know that I've heard good things about you and the work that you've done, and, you know, just welcome your family here this evening. So, thank you. Be safe.
I'd like to say it's been a pleasure working with you the past years, reserve officers together. And I know it was, it was, it was difficult to put yourself through the academy for six months on your own. And I know you'll be a great officer, and you'll be joining great officers with the department. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And finally, I would like to say to the Crescent City citizens, I present to you your newest full-time police officer for the Crescent City Police Department, Officer Yang Lo. Again, congratulations. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all being here. You're welcome to stay all night with us.
Should we take the audit call until we have those answers? Since it's such a big number? I'll just ask to have it removed from consent.
Where'd everybody go?
To celebrate.
Okay. We will move along with the consent calendar, and we have five items. And we're going to approve the regular meeting minutes of the March 7th, 2011 Crescent City Council meeting, and the March 15th special meeting regarding a presentation for the Front Street project. And then, second item, item six, is approval of the warrant claims list for the period March 8th through March 21st, 2011. And then, item seven, approval of bi-weekly payroll reports for the period ending March 12th, paid on March 18th, 2011. And then, receive and file the city's annual audit report. And actually, for clarification, that's fiscal year 20, or 2009 and 2010. And then, to receive and file the January 2011 General Ledger Operating Report.
Mayor, I'd like to ask the council to remove item eight, so that we can have clarification report from the Finance Department on the Public Safety line item and the General Fund.
Very good. Anybody oppose that?
Have it put on, have that put on the next agenda for consideration.
Very good. Is there a motion?
Move to approve items five, six, seven, and nine.
Second.
Okay. A motion of second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously four to nothing. And I should mention that Ms. Westfall is unable to be with us tonight because of an emergency situation in Southern California. Okay. So we will adjourn to the Crescent City Housing Authority. And Madam Clerk, would you have the record reflect that the chair and the directors are all present, except for Ms. Westfall? And so, for the Crescent City Housing Authority, we'll open with public comment. Is there any public comment regarding the Crescent City Housing Authority? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. Item one is approve regular meeting minutes of February 22nd, 2010 of the Crescent City Housing Authority. Item two, approve warrant claims list for the period February 23rd, 2010 to March 21st, 2011. And then, receive and file Housing Authority Annual Audit Report, and that also should be for fiscal year 2009 through 2010.
I would move to approve, and also just note for the record, that the auditor found no weaknesses in the audit, which is a great thing to acknowledge. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion of second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously three to, or four to nothing. And Housing Directors' Report?
I don't have a report, but I do want to ask that we move the Housing Authority to the agenda on the 4th in April instead of the 18th, because my annual plan has to be submitted to HUD by April 15th.
Very good.
Thank you.
So noted, then. Okay. In public hearings, we have none. Continuing business, we have none. New business is to consider the appointment of Virginia Lester and Debbie Williams to the Housing Authority Advisory Commission. And are those ladies here?
Debbie is. I don't see Virginia. She was planning on coming, but I don't see her here.
Okay. Megan, would you like to make the introduction?
I would. This is Debbie Williams. We've worked together in the past, and I think she's just gonna be an absolute asset to our advisory commission. Same with Virginia. They both have a lot of experience with housing, and they've been in the community a long time, and we really appreciate them stepping up and helping out.
I've known Jenny for about 20 years.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
She's so sweet.
She's a hoot.
Yeah, she is. She's really funny. It's gonna be a good time.
Yeah.
Very good. Counsel, are there questions? Clarifications?
Thank you for volunteering.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Move to approve the appointment of Virginia Lester and Debbie Williams to the Housing Authority Advisory Commission.
Second.
Okay. A motion of second. And are we going to do a poll vote? Okay. All right. So, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Those nominations are approved unanimously four to nothing. Thank you, and congratulations, and time to go to work. Thank you. So at this time, we will adjourn.
Where'd everybody go?
To celebrate.
Okay, we will move along with the consent calendar, and we have five items. And we're going to approve the regular meeting minutes of the March 7th, 2011 Crescent City Council Meeting, and the March 15th Special Meeting regarding a presentation for the Front Street Project. And then, second item, Item 6, is approval of the warrant claims list for the period March 8th through March 21st, 2011. And then, Item 7, approval of bi-weekly payroll reports for the period ending March 12th, paid on March 18th, 2011. And then, receive and file the city's annual audit report. And actually, for clarification, that's fiscal year 20, or 2009 and 2010. And then, to receive and file the January 2011 General Ledger Operating Report.
Mayor, I'd like to ask the council to remove Item 8, so that we can have clarification report from the Finance Department on the Public Safety line item in the general fund.
Very good. Anybody opposed that?
Put on that, have that put on the next agenda for consideration.
Very good. Is there a motion?
Move to approve Items 5, 6, 7, and 9.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously four to nothing. And I should mention that Ms. Westfall is unable to be with us tonight because of an emergency situation in Southern California. Okay, so we will adjourn to the Crescent City Housing Authority. And Madam Clerk, would you have the record reflect that the Chair and the Directors are all present, except for Ms. Westfall? And, so, for the Crescent City Housing Authority, we'll open with public comment. Is there any public comment regarding the Crescent City Housing Authority? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to the consent calendar. Item 1 is approve regular meeting minutes of February 22nd, 2010 of the Crescent City Housing Authority. Item 2, approve warrant claims list for the period February 23rd, 2010 to March 21st, 2011. And then, receive and file Housing Authority Annual Audit Report, and that also should be for fiscal year 2009 through 2010.
I would move to approve, and also just note for the record, that the auditor found no weaknesses in the audit, which is a great thing to acknowledge, so thank you.
Very good, thank you.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries unanimously three to no, or four to nothing. And Housing Directors' Report?
I don't have a report, but I do want to ask that we move the Housing Authority to the agenda on the 4th in April, instead of the 18th, because my annual plan has to be submitted to HUD by April 15th.
Very good.
Thank you.
So noted, then. Okay. In public hearings, we have none. Continuing business, we have none. New business is to consider the appointment of Virginia Lester and Debbie Williams to the Housing Authority Advisory Commission. And are those ladies here?
Debbie is. I don't see Virginia. She, she was planning on coming, but I don't see her here.
Okay. Megan, would you like to make the introduction?
I would. This is Debbie Williams. We've worked together in the past, and I think she's just going to be an absolute asset to our Advisory Commission. Same with Virginia. They both have a lot of experience with housing, and they've been in the community a long time, and we really appreciate them stepping up and helping out.
I've known Jenny for about 20 years.
Oh, wow.
Yeah.
And... She's so sweet.
She's a hoot.
Yeah, she is. She's really funny. It's going to be a good time.
Yeah.
Very good. Counsel, any other questions? Clarifications?
Thank you for volunteering.
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Move to approve the appointment of Virginia Lester and Debbie Williams to the Housing Authority Advisory Commission.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. And are we going to do a poll vote? Okay. Alright, so, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Those nominations are approved unanimously four to nothing. Thank you, and congratulations, and time to go to work. Thank you. So at this time, we will adjourn the Crescent City Housing Authority until April the 4th at 6:00 PM. And we will now move to Crescent City Redevelopment Agency and convene that. And Madam Clerk, if you'll reflect those that are present. Okay, we will open the Redevelopment Agency with public comment. Is there any public comment? Welcome.
My name is Richard Miles. I am a resident of the city. First thing I'd like to say, I'd like to thank Eric Weir for giving me the explanation of what dig?
USA.
USA, well, it's the people that marked things. I'm impressed with the colored, coated marks down underneath our breezeway. It's a start. But I have a request of the Redevelopment Agency. And I'm requesting this because of the current events we are going through. Each year, Mary Jo Duncan places flowers at the fountain area to remind us of an event that happened in 1964. Last Friday, or a week ago Friday, we were lucky again. And for that reason, I would hope that this year, the Redevelopment Agency could purchase the flowers to put down by the fountain area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. We will move to the consent calendar, and we'll approve the regular meeting minutes of February 22nd, 2011 of the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency. Item 2, approve the warrant claims list for February 23rd, 2011 to March 21st, 2011. And then, receive and file Redevelopment Agency Annual Audit Report again for fiscal year 2009 to 2010.
I move to approve.
Have a motion and a second. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that passes unanimously four to nothing. Executive Directors' Report, there'll be none this evening. Business items, there's none. Public hearing, there's none. New business is to consider the application to purchase a tax-defulted property from Delnort Mr. Taylor, would you like to address this?
Sure. First I heard of it, but I imagine it was going to be out tonight. I guess...
I think you should make the mayor address it.
No, it's okay. Give a quick talk on it. An ongoing effort to reduce blight in our community. We look at opportunities to remove blighted buildings and blighted structures. We have one that's located along Highway 101 corridor. It's a different address, 240 Highway 101. Basically, the property's coming up on tax rolls, a tax lien sale to the county, so we thought it was a good opportunity to possibly purchase this building, remove the building, and maybe do a different use for the property out there, and possibly put up a sign for the RV park. Give some good frontage here on Highway 101, and clean up that part of town. I believe the price is right, if we can get it for the tax, with taxes arowed on the property.
Mr. Black, do you have anything you want to add to that?
The only thing I want to say is that the, this, this is the first step in a process. And the process begins with a request to the county tax collector to remove this property from the tax sale, as Mr. Taylor mentioned. And then, we need to enter into a Chapter 8 agreement with the county. That has to be approved by the Board of Supervisors, and then, the State Controller's Office actually has to give final consent, and then, we move forward on the agreement that we reach with the Board of Supervisors. So, it's, this isn't a done deal, but it's the first step on the road to getting this accomplished.
And as you mentioned, it's to consider an application for the purchase?
Correct.
For the purchase. Very good. Counsel, any questions?
I'd just like to say, I'd absolutely like to see us move forward with this. That building has been a blighted area for years. I don't even remember the last time somebody inhabited that building. And it's perfect to put up a sign that I've been trying to get us to put up for our Shoreline RV Park. And I, I had one just quick question, and the $22,000 that we referred to earlier, 8,800 of it, or 80, around $8,000, would be to purchase the piece of property. Will all the permits to demolish, and would we have to have any kind of approval from the Coastal Commission to do so? Because it's...
It would require a demolition permit. I don't foresee any problems with that.
Through the Coastal, that wouldn't, okay. I just started seeing dollar signs.
And that goes through, that goes through our local, you know, goes through our local planning commission would approve that.
Even though it's right there?
Yeah, it's in our local jurisdictions for coastal.
Okay.
And the Coastal Commission has a process known as an administrative permit, so you don't actually have to go in front of the commission. And I would imagine that this would be eligible for the administrative permit process.
Great. Okay, thanks.
And it's probably worth noting that this property is in the highway service corridor area. So it's a coastal zone with a highway service designation. Okay, any questions or clarifications on part of the council?
The piece of property, there's a question. Piece of property is on Highway 101, right next to our Shoreline RV Park, that old dilapidated building right there on the corner, kind of right across the building from Renner. So, if...
Would you like to step up for a public comment, please?
Hey, Chris.
Hey, Chris Renner, Sea Renner Petroleum. I'm right across the highway from that building, and that used to be a shell distributorship. I was wondering if you guys should be concerned with the contamination cleanup, or any of that kind of stuff that may come in. You may want to check with water quality, because they haven't investigated the facility yet, and I think I get contamination from over there.
Shell distributorship?
Used to be a shell plant.
It was an above-ground storage facility. Had above-ground tanks at one time, but we checked the geotracker, which is regional water quality control boards. They haven't designated the site for any cleanup or anything.
Have they looked at it, then?
It's not designated for anything, so, I mean, we're looking, the most we're looking at doing after is putting a sign up on there. We demoed the building, so. To my knowledge, there's no buried tanks out there, if that's what we're talking about. Everything we saw, all the old photos and everything we looked at, just had above-ground.
Are you thinking about the property that's closer to Ocean World?
No, it had, it had above-ground tanks at one time, back, even as far back as the 50s, I believe, through the early 60s.
When you say you think you get contamination, what do you mean by that?
Well, they test our stuff every like three months, and then every once in a while, they get a spur or something, they'll start testing out in the S-curves and stuff, and there's been contamination out in front of my building from there, and my room, not mine, it's 76s and Chevrons, goes kind of up creek, a belt creek toward the Thai House more. So, they're having, you know, I don't know where that's coming from, but it tends to follow utility lines and stuff under the highway.
We might be eligible for brownfield money, then, to get it cleaned up.
Well, if it's dirty, I don't know if you guys ought to consider it or not, it's going, you know...
Yeah, we took it in consideration, I mean, when we looked at this, when we put it together.
Will the title, will the, will the clear, when the title comes, will it tell us what's there?
As far as...
Well, there's no, as far as we know, there's no underground tanks. They were above-ground.
No, not to my knowledge. I don't know that there ever was any. Like, basically what it had was about four above-ground tanks at one time there, large silos, kind of like we're at Renner right now, across the street there.
I just, hearing that, I'd like you to maybe just clarify before we buy it.
Yeah, I'm thinking before, before a final decision is made to expend the funds and conclude the Chapter 8 sale, we should have a special consideration of that particular question.
Yeah. Thanks, Chris.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Miles?
I'd like to make a suggestion. I'm glad to see this blighted area being dealt with. But I think Kelly's right, before we go purchase something. I'm aware that water quality has above-ground radar, where they could actually test to see if, you know, the, somebody could... It's like, for years, nobody was aware where Delnort Title was, where there was a service station, there was contamination there until Leslie R. discovered it.
Thank you. Is there any other... Is there any other public comment? Okay, so we will table this, Item Number 4, new business, and have that review done, and then bring it back to the council. Possibly, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd like to clarify what kind of review we're talking about. I mean, we don't own the property, so I'm not really clear on what is exactly what we're doing.
No, you don't want to table it. You want to go forward to request the county to remove it from the tax sale, and then, there will be a negotiation with the county, and while that negotiation is going on, we can look a little further into the history of the property. We can see whether we need a, any kind of testing. You know, we'll make, we'll make a judgment and come back to you with a report that addresses exactly that.
Very good.
It may not be necessary, but we should make sure that you have a comfort level with it.
I move to approve the application process to purchase the tax-defulted property from Delnort County, with the note that we would like to be comfortable with the property's history.
Second.
Very good, have a motion and a second. And Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Schlong?
Yes.
Councilmember Aneah?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
Yes. Thank you. Okay, so that will end the Crescent City Redevelopment Agency. We'll adjourn to the next regular scheduled meeting of April the 4th at 6:00 PM. And now, we will reconvene to the Crescent City City Council, and we will have a public hearing for Item Number 12. We're going to first conduct a public hearing to consider the 2010-11 Application for Community Development Block Grant, CDBG Economic Development Enterprise Fund Allocation Funds.
This is, this year's application for the Economic Development Enterprise Fund allocation. And enterprise fund, I'll warn you, is used differently by CDBG than what you might be used to in other uses, governmental uses. Basically, this resolution is what we use, I mean, this allocation is what we use to fund the North Coast Small Business Development Center's Micro Enterprise Assistance Program, where they provide business assistance and training to small businesses in Delnort County and Crescent City. There, we're basically just going to ask the state to continue funding what we've been doing with a couple of tweaks. We are going to be adding a little bit more individual assistance, funding and activities, so that those folks who can, who want to apply for any kind of loans, including the micro enterprise loans that are run through the tri-agency, can receive assistance funded by the CDBG grant through North Coast Small Business Development Center. In the past, the county has been funding a little bit of the technical assistance that would pay for that time, and the state really wants us to clean that up and, and keep it very separated. So we've said we'll take on the technical assistance. The county is going to apply for the loan money. And so, there'll be a clear, we're funding technical assistance, they're funding loans, there won't be any danger of double-dipping. We believe that we've got enough funding in there to, to take care of those activities without any loss to the community. So that's one minor change to what we've been doing. The other change came about extremely quickly. We were only going to come in for a $400,000 request. The limit of the request is 500,000. When the tsunami hit, we actually got emails from the state saying, what can we do to help? Most of it was, how can we shift around existing money? Which we really can't afford to shift much money that we already have, but there was that little bit of extra in this application that I thought we could put in, that we could specifically target those businesses impacted by the tsunami. And that's not just the boats, that would be any of the businesses that rely on the fishing, that rely on tourism that can't come in because the docks aren't there. So that gives us a fairly broad range of being able to target those businesses that were affected by the tsunami. We're not sure what that's going to look like yet. We haven't really had time to even figure out what the impacts are, but the state has indicated that they're fairly flexible in, as long as it fits within their rules. We can even change from it being a micro enterprise to being a larger business assistance, even though we're not going in for that larger activity at this point. So that was a, was a change from what we're doing right now.
And what is the additional amount, Charlene?
It's an additional 100,000, so...
And will those businesses have to meet TIG? How are they going to, how do you determine that?
If they're micro enterprises, and the micro enterprise is, is a business of less than, I'm quoting this off the top of my head, it's less than five, is it?
Five.
Less than five employees, one of whom is the business owner. So if they qualify for that, then the, the business owner and their employees can do income self-certification. If it's a larger business, then they have to actually do a formal income verification, where they provide income, and that kicks in job creation requirements, if they're a large business. But the, the businesses that come for assistance already get screened, and, and it's determined whether they're micro enterprise or not, and then it's determined whether they're TIG or not. And those TIG benefiting businesses get...
Do you think that they'll turn this application around quicker with approval because of their reaching out to us?
No. No, because this is still a statewide application process, and every, all the other jurisdictions are still eligible to apply. We, we don't get any, what we get are some extra points for what they call an adverse economic event. So we, we have a little bit extra in the scoring, but as far as the timeline, it's going to be the same as it was.
Gotcha, thank you.
I salute you for getting that additional funds included in this submittal. It's a very timely response on your part to try to get aid to those that have experienced such a great loss. So thank you. Any questions by the council?
Appreciate Jim and Barbara's work on this, and probably Bill's.
And Michael Kraft from the Arcata SPD-C is here, and Barbara Burke is also here. So, they can comment on this, and I would also like to request that we, that we do Item 16 as soon after as we can, because it's related, and they would like to be able to get back home, so...
For all your hard work.
Thank you.
She's wearing lots of hats these days.
Okay, I'll open up for, go ahead, go ahead, please.
Sorry, I never know when to do this. Good evening.
Good evening.
It's about six years ago now that the North Coast SPD-C was able to reopen an office in Crescent City, and it is this, this money that makes it possible to have an ongoing staffed off, office downtown, rather than having somebody who would be very good, but a circuit rider here on a part-time basis, and not providing nearly the level of service that Barbara and the rest of the crew here are. I think most of you know what we do, but just... I think most of you know what we do, but just the 20-second version is, we help businesses get started, grow access capital, navigate tough times, did a lot of that in the last two, three years. Barbara has done great work with folks that have been affected by disasters. The previous work in the harbor, when the smaller tsunami went through a couple of years ago, she's worked with most of those harbor-based businesses, so relationships are, are there. And previous to that, a number of us worked on salmon disaster relief that affected this region as well. We basically have two methods. It's, it's one-on-one business counseling and training workshops. We've got five basic workshops. We'll put on a special one now and then. But what we do, we think uniquely well, is that one-on-one stuff. So the sheet that I, that I gave you has the statistics from last year. So most of this, on the top part, is the counseling hours are, the great majority of those were with Barbara, and not quite half of those training attendees took workshops from Barbara. And then our clients here, and we're careful to put it that way, that our clients are the ones that really have an economic impact, created 41 jobs, retained a bunch of jobs, enjoyed some sales increases, and obtained nearly $2 million in, in financing. The, two things that Charlene mentioned that we are gonna do differently are the technical assistance on the loan program, as she said, so Barbara has been doing that already, but it's been funded separately, as this, this breaks it out cleanly, and the county of Delnort has a separate application going in for additional loan funds. They did, did a great job with the first round. All of that money got out, and that doesn't always happen with CDBG micro-loans. It was a very good piece of teamwork between Bill and Barbara and Jim and others. And I'm happy to, so that's the, the quick overview. We're, I'm pretty proud of the operation that we, that we have here, and I'm happy to answer questions if you have them.
Mr. Mayor, pardon me for just a moment. Could you state your name for the record, please?
I apologize for that. Michael Kraft, that's with a K.
Thank you.
I would just like to say that I've always appreciated Barbara's work with local businesses, but didn't really understand the impact until you had your gathering a few months back out of Elk Valley Rancheria, and all of the, you know, people from the region came to celebrate with, with the local office, because it's, and I'm not sure of the designation, but I know they were like number one in population for serving. Can you clarify? I just remember it was pretty cool.
Just as, as its own county, Delnort County outperforms in the Small Business Development Center world some of the biggest counties in the state by population. And so one of my colleagues from our, our funder in the SBDC network was pointing that out, that the numbers that I'm showing you would make Alameda County pretty happy. You know, Oakland is lucky to do this. So it, it really is an operation that goes back to Fran Clark and how involved she was in this community, and involved some hard work in the middle years to keep the relationship and the services going when we didn't have an office here. And then Barbara has done terrific work since then, and that was a very fun event.
Yeah.
Nice to have you there, and, and Councilmember Shlong won my T-shirt.
Didn't I give it back to you?
No, you had a family member. You thought it would fit just fine.
I know, but I think somebody really wanted it, so I gave it to him, because it was like a big shirt. Thank you. Anyway, thanks, Barbara.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Mr. Renfro?
Good evening. My name is Bill Renfro. I'm the Executive Director for the Tri-Agency Economic Development Authority. I would like to speak in support of this proposed application for the CDBG funding. It's, the monies are essential to keeping our local SBDC afloat, and also providing very needed business consultation, business education, business training, business handholding, and business assistance in terms of application for the micro-enterprise loan program. So they're absolutely essential to our community, and I hope that you will approve this application. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Renfro. Mr. Black, we, do we need to open a formal public hearing beyond what we've already done, or swear people in?
Oh, no, I don't necessarily think you need to swear anybody in. You need to make sure everybody that wanted to speak has spoken.
Very good. So this is a public hearing, so anybody that has anything to offer at this time? That'll be after. Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, we'll close public comment and put it back to the council.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 2011-16.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Shlong?
Yes.
Councilmember Aneah?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert.
Yes. So that motion carries four to nothing. Okay, at this time, I would propose that we move item number 16 up and address it at this time while we have these people here. And item 16 is to consider and discuss the ideas for future Community Development Block Grant Economic Development and Planning and Technical Assistance applications. Charlene?
This item is on the agenda to provide you with an opportunity for two applications to, to provide some input and direction to staff. The first one I'm gonna talk about is the Planning and Technical Assistance application, because this is related to the program income waiver process that we just have spent a bunch of time, and now everything's at the state. One of the things that they failed to tell us in, in the beginning of the process was that planning grants are not eligible for the waiver process. So the Beachfront Park Master Plan process is not an eligible activity for program income. So they suggested, and, and it is eligible for their planning and technical assistance grants. The state has informed us that they are going to be releasing a notice of funding availability for planning and technical assistance grants. They have not said when, but they do intend to release one sometime, hopefully soon. So the direction that I was looking for is, do you want me to just go ahead and do a, a planning and technical assistance application for that beachfront master plan? The advantage is you would be having an opportunity to have outside funding for it. The disadvantage is you can't move forward on any aspect of it until the application goes in, you're approved, and a contract is executed, which would delay any hiring of the consultant or any type of planning until that was done.
Do you have any idea what we would be eligible for?
You should be eligible for the, for the $35,000 that you, was it 35 or 37? I don't remember.
I think it was 35.
Okay.
Well-
They change the rules every time, so I hate to say what they would do, but I think it should be eligible.
I, I would ask staff, Jim or Ken, if $35,000 is worth delaying the planning process? Or if we have time for the beachfront park master plan?
So, I mean, your choice is you can delay it to get state money to do it, or you can spend your own funds to, to do it sooner, so that's the-
And the most we would get would be $35,000?
Could I ask Charlene, when, when do you see that, if, if everything went positively for our application, when would it actually fund? Roughly?
Well, they do have a limited time period to, to commit the money that they are taking this pot out of, so I would say by the end of the year, but I-
Roughly?
Yeah, I can't, I mean, that would be, I would think, for sure.
This issue is perplexing, because it is actually, the beachfront park is, is the top priority after Front Street that was established by the, the community and the town hall meetings that we had in the last couple of years. And, and, in the meantime, we've basically put a freeze on spending to get us through this fiscal year and see where we're at. And so it holds us up on moving forward with the, that waiver not being accepted.
What, what would we need to, what would hold us up with the park? We've had meetings on what we want in the park. So why couldn't we just go ahead with what we, what we want in the park?
Using our in-house staff?
Well, we're talking, are you talking about hiring someone to tell us where we should put things in the park? There's not a lot of, I don't, I don't understand what, what, what holds us up. What's holding us up if we apply for this grant?
No, I think it would be the actual, putting the actual plan together. Right?
Mr. Turner, you want to address it?
I guess one thing I would add is, because you're talking about the Front Street project and also the beachfront park, but Jim can correct me if I'm wrong. I believe even we move forward with the Front Street projects, when we get the actual construction of the project, I mean, we're looking at several years down the line. So I'm not sure if a few months would really set us back that much.
This isn't Front Street, though.
I understand that. We're talking about trying to get the plans together, so we kind of get everything going at the same time, is what I'm understanding here, which makes sense. We talked about getting, you know, through how and all that.
Right.
So I'm not sure what, I guess the question would be, what's the timeline we look for for completing the Front Street project or even getting it started?
Well, we, Front Street is supposed to be delivered, I think, in November?
By October, November?
Just the plan.
The actual construction, though, might take several years.
Exactly.
Right, well, we're, yeah, that's the next phase, is getting the actual funding to construct.
And this application, if we let you apply for it, we would know by the end of December if we're getting it.
I think you would be within that timeframe for, for getting. And my understanding, what I was told, and this was just coming from Rod, was that the funding from CDBG was intended to hire a consultant who would do the, the master plan and put, put it together in a format that could be permitted and, and do-
Yeah, so my question to follow up then was, did staff have plans to move that forward this summer? Or do you want to wait for a $35,000 technical assistance grant? Okay.
Gary, that's a good point.
Good.
So when that comes, comes out, when the notice of funding availability comes out, I'll move forward with putting that in. Okay. The second one, excuse me, came up when I emailed the CDBG committee members explaining why we didn't have a discussion about the application that you just approved, being, timing being a factor. The state did not give us a lot of time or a lot of warning when they released this NOFA, so there really wasn't time to do anything different. There were some ideas put back and forth, and so this is kind of the beginning step of, what do we want to look at next year? Do we want to look at any changes? Do we want to see if there are other activities that we want to include in a future application for economic development funds?
So I'm kind of responsible for this. I started thinking, maybe it's outside of the box, but I started thinking about what we could do with these funds, not only to, you know, retain businesses, but to start filling our downtown up and assisting, you know, some kind of a core program that would focus on the downtown area and recruiting business and helping them get started, whether it's a business incubator or just a small business. And so I was wondering if there were any other funds available that we could use to do, to do that.
And, and there are two components of the enterprise fund allocation that we don't currently access. One component is for the larger businesses that are not micro-enterprise. That's called a business assistance program, and it's almost exclusively in the form of loans, but the terms are generally more favorable than what you can get from a bank. And it's also, in the tight credit market, it's, it might be money that's actually there. The problem with the business assistance is it kicks in that one job per $35,000, either retention or creation requirement. With the micro-enterprise, they don't have that requirement. The other component of the, of the enterprise fund that we don't currently access is called a facade improvement, and that is for doing improvements to the front entrance of the business. And it is specifically, I believe, intended to look at downtown where you have several businesses and you want to try to improve that. There is a lot that needs to go into that. You need to have a plan. You need to have guidelines for how people apply, what, what, who qualifies, who doesn't. The kicker with that one is that it, it is a construction project, and it would trigger all of the-
Prevailing wage.
Bacon, prevailing wage, all of the environmental stuff that goes along with a federally funded construction project.
So it's a good news, it's a good news, bad news thing.
Good news, bad news, yeah. And like Humboldt County, I, I have been told, doesn't like the facade improvement project for that very reason, so.
I was just kind of thinking the other night when we're reviewing our consultants' plans for the Front Street improvements, and how we were talking about incorporating some of the design in Front Street and bringing that into our downtown, and how if we had a facade improvement, that it would really complement that project.
Well, and correspondingly, how about the note I had was for the downtown streetscape improvements? We could start to spin off of Front Street and develop downtown.
So I'm interested. I, I think we probably need more information.
Yeah, well, and a lot of the stuff would be, I'd have to ask, like the streetscape, I, I believe that's not a qualifying thing. It has to be on the building. But I, I would have to research, because I just happened to see it in this, this year's NOFA, and I don't recall ever seeing it before. And I went, oh, that's interesting, and moved on, because I needed to deal with, with this year's. But I think, I'm gonna step away from the mic and see if our small-business folks might have some input also on what they want to see.
Again, just for clarification, what, what this is saying is for that facade development for downtown, for every $35,000 that's invested, you have to create one full-time job.
Now, I would have to check on that. I'm not sure that the facade improvement project carries that requirement, the business assistance to the larger non-micro-enterprise businesses does. The facade improvement, I'm not entirely sure, but it does trigger prevailing wage and, and all the federal construction.
Great. Thank you, Charlene.
You know what, just FYI, the city has done a facade improvement program before in downtown. So you might want to look at-
Oh, so there might be guidelines over there?
If there's any information.
Okay, cool.
I know it was done when Jeff Boyer was on staff.
That was before my time. Okay.
Yeah. Demulations change.
Yeah.
I just thought there might be some helpful information.
Very good.
How we did it back then. The good old days.
Barbara, do you want to address anything regarding this, or Michael? Welcome.
It's always nice to be here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Barbara Burke, Small Business Development Center. Can I just add a little something from before? Kelly, you mentioned that businesses affected by the tsunami might need to be TIG, but we do have other funding to pay us to serve all clients. So we serve all clients, and we serve TIG clients, which means people with limited income. The business assistance loans, one job for $35,000 would help many, many businesses here. So that's something that we would like to explore if you all would like to do that. Right, right, Michael?
I don't know what I'm talking about, honestly. But I, I haven't heard of it.
So have I, and, and we kind of brushed against it with the Harbor District renovation when we were guaranteeing for the CDBG all the jobs to qualify for the matching grant, so we-
Is it because they come from the over-the-counter funds?
Well, they, all the other development funds are supposed to carry that one for very quickly. Well, they, all the economic development funds are supposed to carry that loan for $35,000. Over-the-counter is one component, the enterprise fund is another component. It's just that they carved out the micro enterprise, the micro enterprise. And CDBG carries that, some other sources.
Sorry, could you come to the mic, please?
Has to be part of the record.
Okay, um, to answer the question, it's, all of the CDBG economic development money carries that $35,000 per job, um, requirement. They've just carved out the micro enterprise as an exception to that rule. So that's why, um, you, you get that with the bigger, larger business loans.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, we look forward to working with all of, all of the clients and potential clients.
Right.
Including the ones for the $35,000, the larger businesses, that would be really great, thank you.
Very good, thank you. So Counsel, are there other things that we want to discuss to, uh, consider for planning and technical assistance applications in the future?
I'd just like to see us explore those two programs and have her bring something back to us with, you know, more information for us to consider.
I agree, I think we can explore all of our options.
Thank you.
Lucky Jesse will say something, but, uh, I'm really confused. A couple of weeks ago, we had the allocations for the general block grant funding. The city decided at that time to set up, set aside of that money, $35,000, correct?
For the, for the, uh, planning, master plan for Beachfront Park?
Okay, now, the state's now telling us that we can't do that with that money and we're going to have to go through, go through that.
Waiver process.
Waiver process to, you know, if we want to help Tony Barnes clean up his buildings, that's the Drip Dab Kitty. But my concern is, if you've got apples and eggs, what do you do with the dozen eggs? Because don't we still have $35,000 of CBG funding that we haven't spent?
No, it was part of an application.
Let me back up. Two meetings ago, this council awarded the funding from the CBG grants. Well, I want a clarification. No, can I start again?
Please.
There were people that weren't funded before.
It was from CASA from 2006.
Yeah, we, 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 we had a meeting here and you people voted, that the people had went to the county and the city and they were all selected. But we had this $35,000, $35,000 that we wanted to spend on Beachfront Park. So this council and the people that spoke for improving our park, you people took a vote to spend $35,000 to fix the park. I can understand why the state's telling you, you can't do that, but where is the allocation now of that $35,000?
I can answer it. We didn't, we didn't vote to spend it, we voted to apply for it.
For the application.
He's right.
I'm right.
Um, what, that $35,000 just goes back to your program income fund and it's available to do another waiver process for another project, if you want. So it's just.
There's your answer.
It, it was, it is money that you have, that you voted to spend with the state's approval. And the state has said you cannot spend that money on that particular project, so it simply stays in your program income balance.
Right, but we haven't received the money yet.
Yes, you have.
We have?
Mm-hmm, yes. This is program income that you've received from loan repayments, from housing rehabilitation loans. That's what program income is. So it's money that you have, that, that you voted to allocate to particular projects.
Right, I understand that, okay.
And so now that they've said you can't do that, the only other avenue is an application for additional funds.
But we can revisit that $35,000.
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
I'd like to make a suggestion, and then I'll sit down, because I knew I was right. I'm sorry, Kelly.
Happens once in a while.
Yeah, there's a group of businessmen in this community that need some help. Many of our fishermen fleet can't afford insurance. They're business people like, you know, the people that we want to help downtown fix up their buildings and stuff, encourage people like Tony Barnes to do what he should have done years ago. Well, my suggestion that if, if we're going to do anything with our block grant money at this time, we should consider our fishermen.
Very good, thanks, Mr. Miles. Is there any other additional public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council.
So you just need some direction to explore options? Is that all?
Yeah.
Very good.
Thanks for bringing that to our.
And thanks for clarifying. Yeah, we've done so many CBG things in the last couple of months, I got the pots mixed up.
It's a terribly confusing program and the waivers, I just want to speak to the waivers again. The waivers at the state are, um, more difficult than what they led us to believe. They did not provide adequate instruction for the information that they wanted, so I'm having to repeat three or four times the information that I've had to submit. So just so that you know, that's where we are with the waiver process. The only clear answer I got was that one activity that was not eligible. The rest of them, they keep asking me additional questions and then I answer them and then they come up with more questions.
Right.
So we're still, um, at that point.
Right. Just had it lucky, I guess, that we weren't.
Keep it going. Great, thank you, Sherla. Okay, at this time, we will move to item 13, reports. And at this time, we're going to have a report, uh, from Utilities Director Eric Ware on the status of debris removal and damage from the tsunami. Uh, and then, uh, discuss the authorization of $50,000 for debris removal and engineering assessments. Eric?
Yes, good evening. As you mentioned, I'm here to talk about the tsunami that hit our area on the morning of March 11th and into the early morning hours of March 12th. I don't want to restate a whole lot of what's been discussed in previous meetings, but I do want to, uh, just hit the fact of how proud I am of our community and especially our city. When you are, are talking about an event such as a tsunami or any sort of natural disaster such as this, there's really three phases. There's the preparedness phase, there's the response phase, and then there's the recovery phase. How well you are able to respond to an incident is a lot of times how well you have prepared for the incident. And so I'd just like to commend Cindy Henderson. She is the emergency response coordinator for our county and she has done just an absolutely wonderful job. So I felt that we were very prepared, I thought we did an excellent job in our response, and now we're moving into the recovery phase. As far as the recovery phase for the city, we are in a much different situation than what the harbor is. The city was very fortunate as the wave, although it did do some damage to, to the dike area that runs along Howe Drive, as well as the, uh, as well as deposited quite a bit of debris on our beaches, it really didn't damage a lot of our infrastructure for the city. There were approximately 38 pieces of large docks that were deposited upon our beaches in which we are responsible for the cleanup. This is accounting for approximately 50 tons of material. Uh, we have worked in coordination with the Solid Waste Management Authority and they have, they have given us authorization basically to haul this directly to the Dry Creek landfill. So we've contracted with Hemmingson Construction and they've loaded it in their trucks. All the large pieces of docks have been removed from the beaches and have been hauled to Dry Creek landfill in White City. The other item that, that we looked at was the B Street pier. As there was quite a bit of devastation to the harbor's docks and piers, we wanted to make sure that our B Street pier, really our only structure within the harbor that we own as a city, was intact. Uh, there was some speculation at first that it had been damaged, however, we hired Stover Engineering. Uh, he sub-consulted out to Ben C. Gurwick, which is a specialist in dock engineering and, and marine structures. And so they were in town to assess the harbor's docks and piers. Uh, they have done their preliminary assessment and it appears that the B Street pier is, is, is fine, basically. There's a few little maintenance items that need to be done. The actual, uh, structural assessment is going to cost the city less than about $7,500. So dollars well spent, in my opinion. If you look at the Hemmingson Construction estimate for debris removal, they're going to be somewhere around $20,000 as far as costs go. And then the employee time that we have spent on this particular item is somewhere around $8,000. So what I'm asking for tonight is for the council to authorize $50,000 in a budget adjustment. This will need to come from the general fund to account for these costs. Now, that being said, the state has declared this a disaster. So what that does is it qualifies the city for reimbursement of 75%. Now, the federal, it has not reached the federal limits yet, which I believe is 44 million, so it is not declared a federal disaster at this point. If it does go to a federal disaster state, then the feds pick up 75%. The state then picks up 75 of the 25 remaining, leaving the city on the hook for about 6.25%. So at this point of the $50,000, the city would have to match about, say, $12,000, $12.5.
Eric, on the, um, I know Assemblyman Chesbrough's office was communicating with me last week about the 44 million. And then I know that Janine followed up. Do you know if it was determined if that's 44 million county-wide?
I believe it's statewide.
Statewide. It's all events, which they were pretty sure that they were going to exceed.
Okay.
Yes, they're, they're still tallying from the information that I'm hearing. It has not been determined that we have reached that point yet.
Once the state collectively hits the $44 million figure, then I think that triggers the Stafford Act at, at that time.
That's correct.
And, and then the governor can put it to the president and request for, uh, national disaster.
Correct. So at this stage, that's, that's kind of where we're at for immediate recovery as far as beach cleanup and whatnot. Again, our community pulled together, Cindy Henderson and all of the, the emergency response people put together beach cleanup this past weekend, that was very successful. I know Cindy's going to talk after me, so I'll let her hit the details on it. But again, that helped us out tremendously as far as the actual cleanup of our beaches. So I'd like to thank our community for that. The other component of this for the city isn't a real immediate component, but there, it looks like there has been some displacement of the materials along that Howe Drive and shoreline RV Park dike that was placed there back after the 64. So that is the other cost that we are looking at for future expense.
Uh, also, Eric, uh, when we were out there, uh, just along myself with, uh, State Senator Lamalfa, uh, we actually walked on the north beach above the harbor and it seemed like there was a couple of feet of new sand siltation that had been moved in by the tsunami action. So is that an issue?
It doesn't seem to be for the city. Now, that being said, the harbor is a whole.
Federal channel is a whole nother.
Yes, the harbor and the Interboat Basin and whatnot, I've heard that siltation is a, is a major issue for them. Uh, as far as we're concerned, there is some extra siltation up in Elk Creek, but I think it'll just handle itself naturally, is our initial assessment, anyway.
And I think that NOAA was here, um, doing sonar testing in the harbor to look at the bottom of the harbor and what's actually come in.
Yeah, I've heard some initial reports and it's substantial.
Federal channel, yeah.
It's my understanding that the city took everything north of the Elk Creek, along the beach and the waterfront, and then the county took everything south of Elk Creek as a mark, uh, point of demarcation?
That's correct. The city, county, harbor district, in my opinion, we've all worked very well together through this. As, you know, when a disaster like this hits, you sort of take off your agency hat and you work together as a community. And even though the city does actually own that portion of beach, that is right in front of shoreline, the, the common sense divider for the cleanup was the Elk Creek. And so the harbor actually took that since our equipment was on that side of Elk Creek and the, the city took everything between the jetty and that, and Elk Creek.
Just to be clear, it was the harbor that took it, not the county?
Correct.
Okay. So Eric, while you're there, why don't you just tell the council and the audience what you did yourself for those first early morning hours? Because I think it was a key part of stabilizing the situation for the city.
Well, uh, myself, I got a call from Cindy Henderson about 1:00 AM Friday morning and she stated that there had been an earthquake in Japan and that we were expecting a tsunami to go ahead and report to the EOC, which is the Washington Fire Station. And I'd like to take a step back a little bit. You, you, you don't really do anything yourself in this, you know? I mean, as a, as a team and, and as a community, we really bonded together and, and just as a whole, city public works, we, we came together and just did an excellent job. So I responded to the, to the EOC. It was determined that a wave was imminent and that it was predicted it could be as bad as the 64 event. So at that time, we gathered the troops, so to speak, and called out the rest of the public works crew, key utility people, and, and had them coordinate with me to organize our response to this. The public works crew gathered at the yard, got all of the city equipment ready and staged, ready for response. We identified key valves on the water system. We isolated our tanks in case the wave did come in and knock out key main lines. Our tanks were isolated, so after the fact, when we are actually responding and fixing mains, we would have had 6 million gallons for the community to use as a water supply. Uh, we evaluated the wastewater treatment plant. We made some determinations that due to the new wastewater treatment plant improvements that have been made, that the plant should be okay with this wave fight, that it would not get inundated directly by the wave and that there's enough security measures in place that the gates would actually shut down if there was a surge to actually come in as far as flow through the pipes. So we felt that this structure would be safe and be able to serve the community after the event was over. Looking at the other utilities that, that we were responsible for, we coordinated with Blue Star Gas and I can't give them enough credit as, in response to this event potentially happening, they actually shut down the entire gas distribution mains throughout the city. Uh, this is a very costly item for them to do, but they did it on, erring on the side of life, so to speak. Uh, so this took them more than two days to get back up and running because after you shut down your main distribution system, you have to then go through and shut off each individual service, re-pressurize your lines, and then go through and contact every homeowner and relight their pilot light while they're there. So this was a, a major undertaking for them and they did an excellent job. We're also in direct communications with PP&amp;L and they did an excellent job too in working with us in what areas were damaged, shutting off power and then returning power immediately after the event was over.
Excellent, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the council?
No, I just want to thank you, Eric, and, uh, just comment about Blue Star. They did come to my house about 8:30 Friday night and relit my pilot lights for my stove and my, um, hot water heater. And also to thank, uh, the volunteer firemen that came to my door about 4:30 Friday morning. So, I mean, it was just an incredible, uh, team effort to keep our community safe.
I look forward to the day that this, a future city council is giving you a plaque for over 30 years of service in the city.
There's a backstory to that.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you. So is there a public comment?
Kirk Roberts, I live in the city. Uh, two things, is the tsunami siren that was being wired three days after, four days after now working? And can we count on it to be working? Secondly, when I, I left at midnight, because I'm chicken. I saw it on television, I said, I'm out of here. I went out to the end of the B Street parking lot and there were little. little-
You left your house and went to B Street?
No, 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 no. I went, I went up the Smith. And there were little sawhorses blocking off access to the pier. They're still there. And at that point, I don't think anyone knew whether there was damage or not. I would like to suggest, in conjunction with what the planning commission has wished for, for a while, that we start cleaning up the little white building on Front Street preparatory to tearing it down, and take that chain-link fence and build a fence that can be stored someplace to be driven out to the B Street Pier entrance when we want to shut it down, so people don't just walk right past the red tape and past the sawhorses. Something that will keep people who are naturally curious from walking out there. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Miles?
I want to second what Mr. Roberts just said. I think it'd be real easy for our public works department to take that fencing. First thing, I think we need to determine ownership of that fence, because some of that fencing was there from solid waste. Mr. Sparrow had their containers there. But if the city does own them, I'd like to see the city develop a permanent swing fence at the pier and at the breakwater. Saturday, I had some time to kill before I went to the wastewater treatment plant to aid in the beach cleanup. It was still high tide. And for some reason, people can't understand that we have sneaker waves at high tide. So guess what? People that were waiting to sign up to pick up little pieces of styrofoam were walking down an Army Corps of Engineers breakwater.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. So any other public comment? Okay. Bring it back to the council to deal with this first item under thirteen reports.
I had a quick question. I did the math. Twenty thousand for debris removal, eight thousand for staff time, and seventy-five hundred for engineering, which comes to a little over thirty-five thousand. So you're asking for authorization for fifty? What's, are you expecting fifteen thousand more in?
Yes, I believe that number is just building in some contingencies for any unexpected costs that we might have. We don't expect to actually reach that fifty thousand.
But to have it available if you needed it?
If we needed it.
Okay. Any questions on the part of the council?
So much for our spending freeze.
Yeah. The good news is that we will get seventy-five percent back at the minimum and get ninety-three-and-a-half percent back in a maximum scenario.
Well, this is the precise reason we have a reserve fund. And that's the reason we need a reserve fund. I'll move that we authorize up to fifty thousand dollars for debris removal and engineering assessments from our reserve fund.
Have a motion?
Yes.
General Reserve.
General Reserve, yes.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion. A second. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
And can I clarify? Did you say that was from the general fund or the general reserve fund?
The general fund. I'm sorry, the general fund.
Can I come from-
It's coming out of the reserve.
Reserves, anyway.
Yeah. Councilmember Shalung?
Yeah.
Councilmember Enya?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
Yes.
Can we also just, anything above the three contracts that we've engaged in be approved by the city manager?
I think that's reasonable. Do we need to augment the motion?
You talk about the ones that, like the Hemington contract and things like that?
Yeah. We've engaged three contracts. One for-
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Okay. So the motion carries unanimously, afforded nothing? Okay, at this time, we will receive a report from Delnar County Emergency Response Coordinator Cindy Henderson. Welcome, Cindy.
So I originally was told to come so I could talk to you a little bit about the live code tsunami test that was supposed to happen on Wednesday, which we've now decided that's not a good thing. So we've had our exercise and we don't want to play anymore. So I think the next thing I want to tell you about, and just to keep your, just your ears open, is we are having a full-scale exercise. We've planned to have one every year. That was my motto when I first took this job. So the next one is April fourteenth. And we would stand down if we hadn't already had about four to five months of planning into this. And we just really don't want to do that. We've been educating the public, educating the schools, parents of the school kids, and letting them know what it takes to come and to respond to a disaster at a school. And so April fourteenth, we're actually going to have a boiler explosion, a mock boiler explosion at Crescent Elk. And we'll have approximately fifty simulated injuries there with students and staff. And so we'll practice that multi-casual incident and search our hospital.
Great.
Great.
Cindy, could you explain again to our audience here and to the people at home about those sirens? You talked about them. I've been to a lot of meetings with them. Why don't you explain the status of those sirens?
We have currently working six sirens in Delnar County, and working sirens. We have three in Clamath. We have one in Smith River at the Holland Quint Center. We also have one at the Flynn Center, this building here. And we also have one at the harbor. We are currently working with the city. City air tailor is actually in charge of that. And two sirens are up. And actually, Ray Daniels was here from Six Rivers Communications. We were hoping to have them done by the twenty-third. They are brand-new sirens, or brand-new installs that we're doing. So, you know, we expect those to be online any day. So we're working really hard to-
And where will those be?
We have one that's going at the wastewater plant and the other one at the cultural center.
Okay. Well, I can't say enough about, I know it took the entire community to respond, but preparing us to respond was your job, and you did a tremendous job. So I-
Very proud of the community.
Yeah, very proud of everybody. But thank you for pushing everybody to continue to get educated and trained, to be prepared. It's just, it was, you know, we didn't have one loss of life, except for the young man on the Clamath. And I, that means, I think we're blessed.
Thank you for your leadership, Cindy.
Cindy?
Yes.
Actually, I have a question. After this incredibly smooth operation and all the practice that went into it and the drilling and training, do you folks do a debriefing or do a summary of what took place? And then do you propose things that should be considered for the future? Because it seems to me that that's a big part of this, that each of the departments that, you know, participated, that they debriefed and then review things so that we can build on it from a knowledge standpoint.
Right, absolutely. We write an after-action corrective action plan. We debriefed the following, I think it was Monday after the tsunami, as a group with all the agencies. And I've attended the fire department's debriefs. I also attended the public works debrief for the city. And we actually will have an emergency operational center debrief, too, coming up. So once we get and compile all those together, then we write an after-action report and then a corrective action, which, you know, gives our weaknesses that we want to continue to build on and get better at.
One thing I could just point out, from the radio station, I remember a lot of confusion about the ongoing sirens. So people kept calling and asking if they could go, if that meant they could go home. So maybe just educating that that's-
Education that-
Continued alert.
Right. We'll give an all-clear across the radio, and we'll have law enforcement and fire out there saying all-clear, but the tsunami sirens are tsunamis. So the warnings are still continuing and-
Right. Thank you.
Thanks again for everything, Cindy. Any questions or clarifications on the part of council? I would just offer that, spoke with Fritz the other day, and when you realized that Fritz, our IT director, was down at City Hall removing the servers for the computers and/or some equipment to get it out of harm's way, that's pretty amazing. And then also our police chief and his group was, had to go through the same drill to get the computers and servers out of harm's way in the run-up. So those are some of the things that are going on when the rest of us are evacuating or trying to get out of harm's way, that we don't think about, but it's reality. And I would just offer that a couple of months ago, when this council initiated the disaster preparedness plan study for the mitigation thereof, that it seems very timely now, to say the least, regarding our city facilities and the vulnerability of the facilities around the city. So hindsight, we did the right thing.
Yes.
Very good. Okay. Thank you for those reports. We'll move to public comment period. And at this time, any member of the audience is invited to address the city council on any matter that is within the jurisdiction of the city of Crescent City. Comments of public interest or on matters appearing on the agenda are accepted. Note, however, that the council is not able to undertake extended discussion or act on non-agendized items. Such items can be referred to the staff for appropriate action, which may include placement on a future agenda. Any comments that are not at the microphone are out of order and will not be part of the public record. After receiving recognition, recognition from the mayor, please state your name and city or county residency for the record. And public comment is limited to three minutes. Is there any public comment? Mr. Miles?
Mayor Slert, I have a request. And the reason why I have a request is, we went through our disaster here. But there's a nation right now that, where the earthquake happened, had the tsunami, and now is dealing with another crisis. I hope I don't get emotional. I finally got ahold of somebody that I deeply care about that lives in Japan. And I would hope my city council would write a letter of condolence to the consulate general in San Francisco. Because there's a Japanese word, and I'll have to spell it because I can't pronounce it. It's WA, it's a slash. Simple translation is faith. After the tsunami in nineteen-sixty-four, this community came together and we recovered because we had faith. We will recover after the tsunami, clean out, the repairs to our harbor. Because one thing about the citizens of Crescent City, I think an old radio announcer knew it better than I did, we are comeback town in USA. But it's going to take fortitude. You wrote a letter in the newspaper about my city having a new opportunity. I would hope that my city, my county, and my harbor, because of the events recently, would all work together to make this a better community. But I am requesting that my city sign a letter condolence and send it to Japanese consulate in San Francisco.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Miles. Is there other public comment? Mr. Salisbury?
Jesse Salisbury, Crescent City.
Welcome.
Sorry.
Welcome.
Thank you. I had my little laptop back. I wanted to see how our streaming video went. It's like a half-minute off or something. It's kind of funny watching you give a plaque and he's out there showing it to everybody and you're just handing it to him on the... But while I was on the website, I noticed that the agenda is really small. It's so small you can barely read it. And I can't seem to make it larger. I don't know, we have a new platform.
Unfortunately, not a question for me. I'll have to talk to Fritz, our administrator, about that.
Yeah, it's about a fourth of the size it used to be. And also, page two was missing from the minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there other public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we'll, I'm sorry. Please.
Hello, my name's Ricardo De Sloney. I live in the county. I own Woods Plumbing. I have for six years now. I've been talking with Dan Barnes on this issue. We need to kind of address something or try to figure out, how to figure out where we're going to take septic waste or get something built in our forty-eight million dollar facility that would take septic waste. Right now, currently, Roto-Ruter is the only ones in town that are pumping septic. And they kind of got it monopolized, I mean, pretty extreme right now. And I think it would be good for the city because the city could build a tank. And I think roughly the cost of building one of these tanks is probably two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand to three-hundred-thousand dollars. You could charge, you know, ten cents to twenty cents a gallon to take it from the septic pumping companies, which there is nobody that takes it between, I believe, Bandin and Fortuna. There's nobody. McKinleyville takes some, but they only take their own. They're not going to take any out-of-town stuff. And they have, they're not really set up correctly to get rid of theirs, I believe. So I don't know who you address about that or who looks into it. Or I talked to Dan Barnes. I've been talking to him for about-
Jim.
Or Jim Barnes, excuse me. I've been talking to him for about three years on it now. And he was, okay, we're going to get it. Then kind of today, I called him up and asked him about it. And he said to come talk to the city council about it. And I guess that's all I got to say.
Very good. Thank you, Ricardo. I appreciate that. Mr. Barnes, do you want to maybe address this? Mr. Barnes and I have talked about this because I've been approached about the issue also.
Same here.
Yeah, it's true. It is a, just a matter of spending some money getting a tank. In our current NPDES permit, the septicage issue is broached. It's not a, the regional board is not thrilled about the plant accepting septicage, but they also know that the community has to do something about it. What are you going to do with it? And so it would seem that they would make it easy, but they don't. And so, but I think what we do need to do, if we're going to accept septicage, is just as he said, you have to have a tank. And so we can test what comes in, and then we trickle it back into the system. Or we put it in our digesters. It's pretty rough stuff. And the reason, reason that the regional board has a problem with it is that they're unsure when people come in with a tank full of stuff. Well, where did this stuff come from? What is it? And is it real toxic or harmful chemicals that would be hard on our plant? Because we have a biological plant. Or indeed, is it just, would it be real hard on, you know, is it legal to dump? And, because people could take something from anywhere and bring it in and just dump it. And so there's safeguards that need to be in place. And it's really, the reason we haven't built it to date is we haven't had the addition, the needed money to build it. And it's about two-hundred-thousand dollars to put in a septic handling system. So that's all it amounts to, is just having the money set aside to build it.
Wouldn't we need an employee there?
Wouldn't we need an employee there? Would have to be somebody there to be...
No. When they came in with their load, then they would come get somebody and we'd test it and, and keep track of how much was put in and so we could bill it out and, you know, get all the information, so.
So, okay.
So how do other places that accept it, like Banden or McKinleville, for example, how do they safety guard it?
Well, maybe they've been doing it for a long time and, and they don't have the safeguards that are needed now. But right now in California, and the reason people don't take it up and down the state is because it is, you have to have the, the handling facility. It's, it's stressful on the plant. And, but I think with our new plant, we can handle it. It's just a matter of buying the facilities and putting it in. And like Ricardo was saying, I'm sure it would pay for itself within a couple of years.
I was just, I'm, you know, I support actually doing it. Don't know where we're going to get the money right now. But my question was, from the state's point of view, as they continue to talk about putting more and more restrictions on septic systems, do we have any idea how soon we might actually realize the state starting to ban septic systems?
No.
Okay.
I don't, they haven't come out that far with it yet. I don't know how they would be able to...
Well, they've started the discussion. And I know that they were, they just got sued. The Water Quality Control Board just got sued for not implementing the rules and policies for...
Regarding septic systems, probably.
They were supposed to have them in place by two thousand and ten, I think.
Oh. I'm, I don't really know. All I know is there's a need in this community to, like Ricardo was saying, that there's so much of it and you've got to haul it to Banden. That's a long ways.
Mm-hmm.
Is that what, what does Roto-Ruter do with it?
That's what they do.
And?
I, I guess it's Banden or Coos Bay.
White City.
Banden. It seems like what your council needs from staff would be a kind of a cost-benefit analysis. I think the, the capital funds are there, so to speak, in the sewer enterprise fund to do this, assuming that there was a recovery of those, of those costs. And so maybe a discussion of that, two, two or three meetings down the road.
Right. Well, and, and also to take into consideration any plans the state is, has to start implementing. I mean, I'm just saying, you know, what if in ten years, you know, what if they put together this plan and in ten years, we're not going to be allowed to have septic systems anymore? Then what?
That would be paid for, though. That would be paid for, right?
Well, I can't imagine, number one, that it would be paid for, number two, that they could do it. Because what's everybody moving out of their houses and you can't run pipes all that way.
I mean, the tank, the tank would be paid for, that we purchased.
Oh, yes, certainly. It'd be more than paid for within that period of time. Our, our new permit is for five years. It's going to be implemented in May. And so if we did it pretty soon, I mean, they wouldn't be able to take, you know, for the next five years anyway. And I don't believe they will for a while.
Okay.
So it'd probably be good to start exploring it now.
Yeah. I would just say, let's ask staff to report back to you in, let's say, eight weeks, four, three, four meetings from now, with some sort of cost-benefit discussion so that you can take the next step.
Do we have room for it at the plant? We have room for that tank?
Yes. We know where it was going to be. We actually had a, I've been discussing with the designers putting it in. And then as we got towards the end, we didn't have enough money. I was going to ask for it with the last request. And then as, you know, I mean, it's something that personally I've wanted to do. I know that a lot of the operators don't like the idea because it's quite a bit of effort and it's pretty rough stuff. So, but I do believe it's really a need in this region. So I think, and it's also a revenue for the treatment plant.
As, as you and I have talked, it, it is about the state regulations. It's not just about you go out there and open up the ground and put a tank in there. There's a whole series of regulations associated with that and the monitoring thereof and/or staff associated. So, but I think the key point was made is that it does come from the sewer fund ultimately as compared to the general fund. So it's an important point to make. And, and every indication is the water quality control people are coming.
And, but actually, they're not that uncomfortable with us doing it. They have just a lot of rules, but, and it's basically because you don't know what people are bringing in, you can't see it.
Did you just certify the business owner for bringing it to the plant?
We would have our standard haulers that were accustomed to, and they would know the rules. And we would discuss with them, you know, if you, if you goof up, it's going to be your problem. And I think most of the time, it would be people you don't know that you have to be more careful with.
And I think it's important also to note that, take the winter time that we're experiencing right now, that all that rain is raising our water tables. So that's affecting the septic systems very directly, to the point where people, I think, their, their systems are basically bubbling up to the surface. And then if they have a well on their property also, there are cross-contamination issues to be considered.
That's, that's true.
So it's, it's, it's a dynamic issue.
Could we actually, is there a permitting process?
No. But we, yes and no. What I, we've already been discussing it with the state. It's in our current permit, although I think we'll have to make some modifications to that permit at the time we put it in. And, but it's something that they have agreed that we can do.
And if this council chose to fund it through the sewer fund, how soon could we actually implement it?
I would think, once you say you go ahead, it would take about four or five months to get it implemented. We'd have to bid what we needed, then they'd have to bring it in. Like I said, it's a package plant. It's usually a package system.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Ricardo, for bringing this issue up. Okay. Any other public comment? Okay. Seeing none, we'll close public comment and continue with continuing business. Item number fourteen, as we will consider waive the full reading, read by title only, and introduce ordinance number seven sixty. Mr. Black?
I'm not sure if this is mine or Mr. Taylor, I believe.
Okay. I'll take lead on this then. As you're aware, we've brought this forward twice before, ready for discussion. This is in regards to our local coastal program update. Basically, what you're considering tonight is ordinance seven sixty, which updates our zoning code, and resolution twenty-eleven dash zero-six, which would update the actual local coastal program. Sorry, I've already stated, I've already presented this twice. I'm not sure you guys want to listen to me give the whole performance again. I'll entertain any questions if there are any...
Eric, this is the, the agenda says introduce, but actually this is the second reading, right?
I was directed by Martha that this needed to be an introduction, even though the last time it was read aloud and adopted, she said to have it introduced tonight and then adopted at the next meeting.
Okay. All right. So this is the introduction of something that you already voted on.
Mm-hmm.
The introduction is tabled, so it's second.
No. No. It was, it was tabled the first time, brought back the second time, and was action taken on it. But I really can't, I can't speak for, for Martha, but I know that there was a little bit of a procedural...
A glitch?
Issue.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're just trying to cover all bases.
No one talked to me about it, so I don't know. I don't know why. I don't know why it's back. But it's back.
It's back.
So I recommend you go forward and introduce it.
Good.
I just don't know why, so I didn't...
It could have been something like, it didn't get published.
They didn't properly introduce it. At the next meeting, they thought it was the second reading.
Well, I think there was a problem with publishing. If you don't get it published in the newspaper in a timely order, if you miss a deadline, then you have to start over.
No, you don't start over. You just push the adoption off another two weeks, but it's okay. I would, I would recommend, I, I recommend that we follow the, follow the agenda and go ahead and read by title only and introduce it. There is not, you don't have the resolution back on your agenda because resolutions don't require first reading, second, et cetera.
Okay. I, I will read it then. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Crescent City, Del Norte County, State of California, adopting zoning code amendment eleven dash oh-one to make various changes to the city's municipal code as required by the California Coastal Commission and agreed to by the city council in conjunction with certification of the local coastal program amendment number CRC dash MAJ dash one dash zero-three. LCP update as provisionally approved by the California Coastal Commission and furthermore finding the approval of the zoning code amendment exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to section twenty-one zero-eight zero point nine of the California Environmental Quality Act, as the Coastal Commission has found that approval of the LCP with the incorporation of suggested modifications would not result in significant environmental impacts pursuant to CEQA.
Well, well done, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So we reintroduced it.
Well, you still have to get a second, I believe.
I'll second that.
All right. And is there a public comment? Okay. Seeing no public comment, we will hold till the next action.
You have to vote.
Okay.
We're all confused tonight.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. That was my plan all along.
At least someone's doing something right tonight. Councilmember Shalon?
No.
Councilmember Enya?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
Yes. So the motion carries three to one? Okay. We will move to new business. Item number fifteen, consider waive the full reading, read by title only, introduce ordinance number seven sixty-two. An ordinance of the city of Crescent City amending chapter seventeen point zero-two-three point zero-three-zero J and seventeen point zero-two-three point three-five B of title seventeen of the Crescent City Municipal Code, an amendment of the community waterfront district.
Actually, commercial waterfront district.
Commercial waterfront district. Mr. Taylor?
Kind of already alluded to, it's, basically what we're talking about here is an amendment to allow light manufacturing within the commercial waterfront district. The district expands from A Street to K Street and encompasses kind of the first two blocks between Front Street, Second Street, and Second and Third Street. The north half of Third Street will have a different zoning. I was probably already aware that we received an application for light manufacturing use at the site of the, at four hundred, Front Street, which is more commonly referred to as your brewery site. So basically, I just want to kind of clarify to you that this, this would be an amendment for the entire zoning district for the commercial waterfront. Currently, the zoning reads under, as you already talked about, for under J, section J of the chapter, it's food production, food product processing, which includes onsite retail sales and which does not result in exterior air, noise, dust, odor, vibration, or glare impacts, where no animals are kept or stored onsite, such as cheese factory, fish market, or candy factory. That's chapter seventeen, seventeen, section seventeen point two-three point oh-three oh-J. The amended zoning would read, food product processing or light manufacturing, which includes onsite retail sales and which does not result in exterior air, noise, dust, odor, vibration, or glare impacts, and where no animals or bulk flammables are kept or stored onsite, such as cheese factory, fish market, or candy factory. In addition to this, we found it necessary to amend seventeen point two-three oh-five oh-three five B, basic which is under uses prohibited. Currently reads, any manufacturing use is not specifically defined herein, and we would change that to read, any manufacturing use is not expressly permitted herein. Obviously, you can't, you wouldn't be able to list every light manufacturing use, so leave that open. And basically, what this would allow would be, would allow light manufacturing uses by use permit, so it would go through a use permit review process where the use permit, basically conditional use permit, so you could add conditions of use onto the permit. Now, one thing, other thing we'd look at here is would be our general plan consistency. Currently, the, under the general plan is, the commercial waterfront is designated as visitor and local commercial, VLC. And I'll just read kind of the highlighted point of that. This designation provides for a combination of commercial uses, including visitor-serving commercial uses, local-serving commercial uses, and regional-serving commercial uses. And if you go back and look, it lists certain kind of uses, but it's not an all-encompassing use, it kinds of general guidelines for uses within that district. If we go back and look at the guidelines published for, by the governor's office of planning and research for general plan, basically what it says is, an action program or projects consistent with the general plan, if considering all its aspects, that will further the objectives and policies of the general plan and not obstruct their attainment. So basically, it's meaning that it doesn't have to be, you know, specifically spelled out and or named, that certain types of uses. Staff believes that the proposed additional uses in this designation will not obstruct the attainment of the area promoting general, regional-serving commercial uses, particularly considering the previous use of the building as a brewery and, basically a brewery and kind of a distribution center for bottling their beer. We don't feel it's necessary for any kind of adjustment to the zoning code section for purpose. It basically mirrors what the general plan says at this time. We'll add that about four years, years ago, we actually did a similar adjustment to the C-one district, downtown business district, and almost has the same language. To date, we haven't really experienced any significant impacts due to that adjustment. Again, as, as I discussed, and it was discussed in depth at the planning commission, when they recommended this on, actually recommended this March tenth, planning commission meeting, they felt comfortable with adding light manufacturing use because of the use permit process, so that you can condition any light manufacturing use to make it compatible. If they're not compatible, not compatible uses, and they're not compatible, they're not going to go into that zone. So at this point, I'll entertain any questions.
Very good. Council on questions? Mr. Black, as city attorney or acting city manager, any additional follow-up thoughts?
I don't know which you have to put on.
Could you switch chairs when you?
Yeah. I, I worked very closely with Eric in designing how we were going to do this, and although the changes are very small, I think that they preserve the discretion on the part of the planning commission and city council through the use permit process. I think they are narrow, the changes are narrow, so that, you know, you're not opening the barn door to all kinds of heavy manufacturing or undesirable uses. So I can recommend it as city attorney, I can also recommend it as acting city manager, at least until the end of this week. After that, somebody may come along and take it back, but I don't think so.
Very good. Thank you. Is there public comment? Mr. Renfro?
Good evening. My name's Bill Renfro. I'm the executive director for the Tri-Agency Economic Development Authority. One of the missions of the Tri-Agency is to not only represent the economic development interests of the city and the county and the harbor, but it is also to recruit new businesses into our community. By allowing for this zone modification, this zone amendment to the coastal waterfront designation, it will allow for us to recruit high-tech, green businesses into our community. In today's urban planning and urban development guidelines, many communities now are adopting mixed use, which allows for work, play, and living. And by having these kind of businesses downtown, you definitely encourage more people to stay there for longer during the day. High-tech businesses that would fit under this proposed zoning change pay family wage jobs. These are career jobs with benefits. These are the kind of jobs that allow people to go buy cars, buy homes, send their kids to college. to college. We can look at other communities throughout the state that have encouraged high-tech industry to move into their town, and almost without fail, they've been a huge asset to the community. One of the things that often are overlooked are when these companies come to town and when they produce high-quality products, the owners of those products physically have to come audit these facilities. So if you bring a business in town and the people they're making parts for are in New York City or Miami, those people actually have to come and make sure that the parts are actually manufactured here and they're not imported and just stamped, made in USA. So that brings a whole nother level of, of not exactly tourists, but certainly visitors into our community. And last, but not least, these kinds of opportunities are rare to come by today. Many communities spend a lot of time and effort courting these kind of businesses and providing fairly hefty incentive packages just to get these folks into town. So by us changing our zoning, it certainly opens up opportunities for us to bring new businesses into the community. And as Mr. Taylor pointed out, all of these potential businesses would have to come to City Council for a conditional use permit, at which time, if you don't like them, you don't have to give them a permit. Anyway, thank you for the consideration.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Barrett?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, my name is Jim Barrett, I live on Angelo Street, and I don't really think there's any need for us to come up here and support this. I would imagine you're all in favor of doing it, but just for the public record, I'd like you to say that I'd like you to know, I've always been an advocate of tourism and sea kayaking and bike riding and fishing and all that good stuff, but realistically, I've been out there, I do all of those things enough to know that you got a good four, five, six months at best, that you can really do that on a commercial level, and I love the idea of mixed-use communities, I just absolutely, totally believe in it. I would have personally preferred to see you open it up even wider. I did have a question about the details as he read the change, I, it sounded to me, I probably misheard it, but I heard something about the cheese plant and, you know, cheese manufacturing and some restrictions, and I hope we didn't, I mean, back there, it sounded like we were only going to be allowed to have one cheese plant, I can't, I can't imagine that's really true. So I hope that, and I bring this up because I hope that someday we're going to have our own locally-processed milk, we raise it here, if you call it being raised, I'd like to see it bottled here in real bottles with no hormone mimickers. So, basically, I just, for public record, want to say, I'm in favor of this, I'm in favor of expanding the mixed-city concept. I'd ask you not to be worried about the tourist industry because I don't really think it's ever going to be as great as we would like it to be, and I do hope we're not excluding anything food-related. Thank you.
It actually allows for those uses by use permit.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett. Mr. Miles?
This is the main reason why I decided, and break a promise to attend this meeting, I'd like to point something out, and I pointed this out at the planning meeting. U.S. Department of Commerce has some statistics, they used to put out a big book that, as a librarian, I learned how to use. U.S. Department of Commerce says that when you introduce light manufacturing business in a community like any other business, for every three dollars of income that a business brings in like that, it creates twelve or more dollars in a community. One of the problems we have in this community, I want to use a good example, is a number our youth have to move out of the area because there isn't any jobs. By introducing these types of businesses to the area, it creates more than low-income, non-family wages. You can go out and buy a home on these kinds of wages, you can support our car dealers, et cetera. So, we had a group of people, and I want to thank Mr., you know, we had this building that the roof was falling in, and he went out, found a business that wanted to come to town, which you can thank for that. But at the same time, I remember something, and I'm going to say it, and some people may not like it, because I think I'm on a roll tonight. A gentleman came from Sacramento a few years ago when Kelly Sorg was mayor, and he visited by City Council, and he visited the Board of Supervisors. He was from the state, not redevelopment, but I can't remember, he's like Mr. Rankle, but he's state-level, and he said that this city and this county needed to do something. Well, guess what? We never have actually accomplished it. At the planning meeting, somebody got up and said, well, did anybody look at Hambrus for this business, because they got vacant structures out there that could be used for manufacturing? Well, we've got a lot of infill in our city that we need to look at, and one of the things this gentleman suggested, that we do a map. Well, it's my understanding that we could use the current interlay of technology we have at the city to produce this map. It just makes it...
Mr. Miles, can we finish up?
Yeah, I'll sit down.
Thank you.
I think we get the point.
Thank you, we do. Anybody else? Okay, seeing no other public comment, we'll close public comment, bring it back to the council. Verifications, discussion?
I was just going to say, I know there's, you know, been concerns on each side of the project, but I'm very happy that we're actually going to fill that building and produce jobs, because that's what our city needs right now, so I'm in favor of the project, or the zoning change, I should say.
Mr. Enya?
Yes, Mayor. Okay, I would just offer, the existing building continues to be in disrepair and decay, the roof is leaking severely, it's a state of blight for our downtown. I'm happy that the Planning Commission has approved it unanimously in their last meeting. I think it does represent a good economic engine for our city, and I think it's important to remember, at one time, our entire city was a manufacturing city, we were a timber community. So, the notion of, as Mr. Barrett referred to, mixed use and others is appropriate, I believe, for our downtown. I think it's also important to note that Mr. Renfro and others had looked at numerous options for that particular property, and it's a state of default, including the possibility of relocating City Hall, entertained the idea of several restaurants and/or lounges, mixed merchants booths, an office supply company, and one of the local cooking schools was interested. So, a lot of people looked at it, and when they ran the numbers and did their per forma, it didn't work out. Meantime, we get a group that is a green group, and they're familiar with our community, and they're proposing to come in here and create some valuable jobs for our community, that they're green and they're friendly, and I guess I'm thinking, instead of baking bread, they're baking aluminum. So, I'm happy with the possible change in the zoning to allow this business. Any other?
You said it very well.
I would move to approve ordinance number seven sixty-two for the City of Crescent City amending chapter seventeen point oh-two-three-point-oh-three-oh-J and seventeen point oh-two-three-point-three-five-B of title seventeen of the Crescent City Municipal Code in our Commercial Waterfront District.
Second.
Can we have a motion of second? Madam Clerk, would you pull the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Councilmember Shalung?
Yes.
Councilmember Enya?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert?
Yes, so that passes unanimously and four to nothing, and I think that's a momentous occasion for our city. Persuading, thank you. Okay, moving on to item seventeen, consider and approve the amendment of the Crescent City City Management Employees Association memorandum of understanding revising the pay schedule for the wastewater treatment plant supervisor. And, Mr. Black, would you like to address this, or?
Yes, Mayor. As you know, the city has a forty-four million dollar asset, and that's just new investment in the city's sewage treatment facility. In order to operate a technical plant like that, there is a level of education and certification required. The city has not been successful in recruiting applicants for the wastewater treatment plant supervisor position at current salary levels, and the reason is that we simply don't offer a salary level that is comparable to similar positions throughout the state of California and possibly beyond. So what you have before you is a, an approval of an amendment, this is kind of a technical step, but it's the amendment of the memorandum of understanding with the Management Employees Association that would allow us to go forward and recruit at a more appropriate salary range or step range for the position of WWTP supervisor. And staff, your engineering staff may have something to add on that point, but I think you understand the basics.
Any questions by the council?
I don't see the resolution number on here.
It's resolution number two thousand and eleven dash seventeen.
I would offer that the city staff has been on a search for some time now for a supervisor since we learned that our former supervisor was going to be leaving us, and he actually stayed on longer to help us through this period. And in doing some research, there are about four or five communities on the North Coast of eight that I've identified that all offer more for the wastewater treatment supervisor than we've offered. So, part of the dilemma is the competition is taking the good guys, and we're not able to recruit the candidates that are probably necessary to run this new forty-two-and-a-half million-dollar battleship that we have, which is going to be important to run it like a Navy facility. So, to me, it's, it's important that we consider this so that we can get the right person, and it's important to note that I think it's true that this salary comes out of the sewer fund exclusively, so it's not coming out of the general fund, and the proposed increase is a twelve percent increase. Is there any public comment?
Definitely there's public comment.
Mr. Barrett?
You guys were fairly resolute about pay wages and the problems that you had with your, your budget, just last meeting, and I'd like you to at least consider, even though I know you won't, but I'd like you to consider paying whatever fines you have to pay, whatever training money you have to train, and simply promote from within regardless of what you have to do to do that. Even if you have to get your most boneheaded, low-level person, I would like to see you work somebody from our area into that position, even if it costs you extra money. I hate the idea of simply becoming part of a statewide, countrywide bidding war over a handful of people that really can't meet your needs because they don't exist. So, take the chance, do something odd, I guess, spend the money, and get yourself somebody trained from within. And I'm saying that you might have to pay fines, because I'm guessing that'll take a little time, I'm guessing that'll cost something, and it seems to be pretty easy to get fined for any number of reasons, so I don't want to be naive about it, but don't be wimpy about it either. Try to take somebody in our city and train them, there's plenty of people who would volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miles?
Well, maybe our city engineer can correct me if I'm wrong. It's my understanding to have a supervisor for our treatment level, that person has to have a Level Six certificate, three?
Three.
Okay, but, but to do it right, you know, we got this million-dollar battleship...
It's not a battleship, it's a wastewater plant. Forty-two million dollars.
Well, you know, listen, Richard, I understand that there's a level of licensing, and it's my knowledge that we have tried to bring people that are currently working at a plant up to a level that they could pass the test. I know one individual, I won't mention his name, because I don't, I don't want a certain gentleman coming after me and breaking my legs, but this gentleman wasn't successful in taking this test. So I disagree with Mr. Barrett, I believe in order to find an employee that has the skills to manage our sewer treatment plant, that we need to go outside the area and recruit. I'm aware that, I think it's in Missouri, there's a special school, and people go to this school, and they get these certificates, or they pass the state test, because they've got to have that state license too, to get past water quality people. So my suggestion is that you approve this with the consent of going on the outside, recruiting in unnecessary publications, and hiring somebody that can run our plant and supervise our operators, and have the education that we can have confidence in that our plant is working the way it should, after the citizens of Crescent City are occurring out of their pocket to run this plant.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Other public comment? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council.
You know, I wish it was as easy as you talk about, Jim. The problem with it, you have to have the certification, and you have to have time and grade, and there are people at the treatment plant that just don't have the time yet, and so that's why we have to go outside, because no one's qualified for the job yet here. But in the future, when the people that we have at the plant have the time in and pass the test, then we will be inside. But right now, there is no one that's qualified to run the plant, so we have to go outside.
Well, I don't know if there's nobody that's qualified. I think if we have anybody here locally that is qualified, they can apply for the job. It may be that they didn't apply for the job, and I do want to point out that the city actually pays our employees for the training and testing that they take to try to become better qualified employees. So, when our wastewater treatment plant operators want to try to take a test to upgrade their level of expertise, the city usually pays for that.
Well said.
I'd like to ask you, do we have someone that meets the qualifications that's not going to apply or is going to apply?
Well, let me put it, let me say before I answer that, anymore being a wastewater treatment plant supervisor isn't just taking... Anymore being a wastewater treatment plant supervisor isn't just taking care of the maintenance at the plant and running the personnel, but the processes we have in place are pretty complex processes, and it's a biological system, and it takes being able to handle the understanding of the process, and when something goes wrong, how do you fix it? And these aren't easy to do, so they have to be skilled at mechanical things, the process, personnel, and on top of that, they work with the state boards, and so they have to be competent in speaking to the state as well. And therefore, the superintendent aren't just people that come up through the system and get certified. They have to have a lot of skills in order to perform the tasks that's required now, and it's getting harder and harder to do all the things that's necessary, because it isn't just a mechanic who has a certain type of mindset that used to be able to take care of things and keep things painted, but now they have to deal with a lot of these permitting issues and so on. And speaking of fines, every violation, and you can violate in a hundred different ways every day, is a three thousand dollar fine, and now the state is trying to get all the money they can. So, if your process gets sour, it costs you a lot of money, and if you don't know how to make sure it works, that's a problem. And we have a new facility that requires, what I am pretty particular, I want it looking new in twenty years from now and operating in the same way. I don't want any violations. You know, I have a fairly high standard, and you look at Arcata, Fortuna, Fort Bragg, all the operators up and down the coast, they make a certain level. Like, it's fifty-six to fifty-eight thousand is the minimum salary, sixty-six to seventy-one is the top of the salary range, and that's the same with all of these folks, and ours is forty-three to fifty-two. And so, how are you going to get somebody to take that kind of a reduction to come to Crescent City to work on a real complicated plant? You know, why would you? And so, that's the dilemma we find ourselves. We have to be competitive with all the facilities up and down the coast here in the north coast. It isn't like we're trying to be way and above everybody else. We want to be the same as all the rest of the communities up and down the coast. So, that's where we are, and that's the situation that you find yourself in.
And I know in talking with you, Mr. Barnes, that you've had an interest to try to groom people from within the staff to the degree possible so that in the future, that person could step up, but they're not quite there yet. And so, I think that's a long-term interest. In the short term, though, we have a problem.
Well, Janine and I felt like we should go out and look for someone. Folks, this is, like I said, this is a very difficult position. You can groom people for it, but they have to be the right people as well.
It's a huge responsibility.
And it isn't just having the certifications, because you can study and get that, it's being able to have all the skills necessary to lead a wastewater treatment plant group and deal with all the things that come up in that process.
Any other questions? Thank you. Okay. I'll bring it back to the council.
I would move to approve Resolution two thousand and eleven dash seventeen, and this will go into effect to the end of June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, when the CCMEA contract is up for renewal.
Does that include the amendment number one, too?
Yeah, I think it's referenced, isn't it? If not, it refers...
Says amended as attached. Amended as attached.
And Amendment Number One.
I'll second that.
Can I have a motion and second? Adam Burke, will you pull the vote?
Could I, wait, before we vote, could I ask the maker of the motion to restate it? Because I didn't, I didn't understand the last part myself about July one.
This is actually only good through June thirtieth, two thousand and twelve, and the reason is that the CCMEA renegotiates their contract in two thousand and twelve, and so...
Right.
The council at that given moment could change it.
Okay. Now, I understand. Thanks.
Did you get that?
I did, thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Shaloon?
Yes.
Councilmember Ania?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murray?
Yes.
And Mayor Slert.
Yes. So, the motion carries unanimously, four to nothing. Okay. Thank you. At this time, we will move to legislative matters. Mr. Black?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing I would have would be to ask your council whether or not you would want a letter sent to our state representatives encouraging them to adopt the California Redevelopment Association Alternative to the Abolition of Redevelopment Agencies, which has been, the alternative proposal has been endorsed by the League of California Cities, and that's just a question as a policy matter, whether you would want to support that or just take our chances that the redevelopment abolition will fail.
I'm hoping it's going to fail.
So am I. I'm not in favor of sending a letter.
I think we already sent one letter, didn't we?
Supporting, supporting RDA.
Yeah.
Supporting RDA, we sent letters, yes.
Yeah. But what Bob's talking about is that California Redevelopment Agency has put forth an alternative. Yeah.
My point is that we've already sent a letter saying we support RDAs.
Yeah. Well, this, the alternative would, of course, preserve RDAs, but at some cost. So, you'd be paying ransom, basically.
And possibly only for two years.
Yeah. Well, in this climate, it's one or two years at a time, let's be honest about it, because everything is on...
One day at a time.
Everything is on the table, everything seems to be on the table every year, so...
I also wanted to put out, I received a letter of a, or a copy of a letter that was addressed to Wes Chesbrough with the Assembly from Regional Council of Rural Counties, supporting AB seven ninety-eight, which is the bill that supports Smith River Rancheria becoming, or having, being eligible to become a member of a JPA, specifically our Border Coast Regional Airport Authority JPA. And I will, I'll pass this on to Bob, but it might be something we'd also want to support.
You have actually supported the same legislation last year.
Right, I know.
Another effort, so I'm wondering, would you like, would you like another letter sent? Because what happens, they add the letter to the bill file, and it does become significant.
Is there still time? I don't know when they're going to be voting on that.
Oh, I believe so. I think that was just, it's just a bill that was regularly introduced. It may not be voted on until, you know, later this month or...
Well, then, I would ask the council to consider supporting it.
I'm in favor of that, and the Delmar County Democratic Central Committee also sent a letter in support.
So, we will take a, we'll prepare a letter for the mayor's signature.
Very good. Thank you. Any other legislative matters? Okay, how about reports? Mr. Barrett?
I attended the Area One on Aging yearly meeting here a few days ago, and both Supervisor Sullivan and I encouraged the Executive Director of Area One on Aging, which is located in Eureka and serves both Humboldt and Delmar County, to place a visible office in Crescent City. We have a significant number of seniors that don't even know what the Area One on Aging is, and since that money comes from the federal government, we have a right to have an office here. So, they're taking that under consideration. And let's see, I attended the Solid Waste Meeting last week for Councilmembers Shaloon, and that's about it for the last two weeks that I can remember.
Mr. Murray?
Well, we, I think all of us attended the meeting that we had on Saturday morning with the Emergency Response Team, including Congressman Mike Thompson and Assemblyman Chesbrough, and our County Board of Supervisors, and our Harbor Commissioners in response to the tsunami, and we took a tour of the harbor. So, I did that, and then I also attended the Solid Waste Meeting, and some of you have been reading in the paper about a reformation of the Delmar County Senior Center, so we've, I think we're getting that on solid ground now, so stay tuned for more on that, but I think we're in a reformation and restructuring of that, and I think that we'll be stronger and serve the seniors a lot better because of it.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Shaloon?
I've been participating in the Delmar Solid Waste Management Authority's Ad Hoc Committee, continuing to negotiate through the new franchise agreement that'll take effect in July of this year. And Monday night, or sorry, Tuesday night, we had a special council meeting where we interviewed four consultants for the redesign of Front Street, and we chose our top two, being Haglen, Drake and Haglen, and number two is Stover Engineering. So, hopefully, we'll see new design of Front Street plans by the end of November. And, I don't know, I attended something called a tsunami. Same thing that Catherine was mentioning, we did a lot of follow-up meetings. Charles and I spent a lot of time down at the harbor, working with public relations people, and I just can't say again enough how proud I am to live in Crescent City and have the people that live here and work here working together to get us through this, what, you know, might be considered outside a small disaster, but to us is very devastating. And, you know, my thoughts continue to go out to those that have lost their boats and/or have been affected by the tsunami, and I know that, I'm very confident that we're all working together to make that better for them. And I think our town hall meeting that Charles and I facilitated, there were about three hundred people there, and I don't, I mean, other than some emotions and frustration, I think it went very well and served its purpose, which was to, you know, to talk to the community and listen, and give them a voice in, you know, what was a pretty tragic week. And I think the fishing game and the U.S. Coast Guard has been tremendous, and just, you know, like Richard Young said, we didn't ask them to come, they just came and started pitching in and helping, and they've been great to work with. And, what else? I just wanted to mention two things. On Thursday, April seventh, from five to eight, America's Wild Rivers Coast will have their five-chamber mixer at the new Tola Events Center at Lucky Seven. And then, for those of you that have been around for a while, the name Liz Margia is a well-known name, and she is actually retiring. She works for Congressman Mike Thompson and has, she's been working for thirty-five years, and she is having her retirement party in Eureka on April ninth, and I just wanted to publicly say thank you. She's been very supportive of our community since I've been involved in the local politics scene, and has always returned a call or an email and been a good listener, so that's it. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. I would like to note that everything for the past week and a half has been about tsunami central, and I'd like to extend gratitude to my colleagues for stepping in there and helping on multiple levels, various meetings and taking calls with the news media that seem to be never-ending, even to this day, and into the future. It is, I think, important that Crescent City has been identified on the map on a national, and I think even an international basis, and we get a little more respect now because they realize that we're susceptible and we've actually had some serious damage here. So, my interest is in appreciation of follow-up on the parts of the news media that they want to keep the story alive and tell our story, which is particular and unique to us. So, I think that's very positive. And I think the town hall Fisherman's Meeting was very successful, it was about communication and getting the fishermen connected with this part of the world after realizing such devastation. So, and then Saturday was just unbelievable, hailstorms in the morning, and at twelve-thirty, about two hundred-plus people showed up at the wastewater treatment plant to help clean the beaches, and it was pretty overwhelming. So, we got out there with some wind gusts of maybe thirty-five, forty miles an hour, and downpours, and picked up rope and plastic and tires and parts of docks. So, I think it was very successful, and it's probably the first of a few to come in the future, but again, the Crescent City rally and support and everybody working together is greatly appreciated. So, that's basically what I have, but I do have an email that I was sent, and I wanted to share it. It says, "Hi, Charles, I have a request for you to read this email at the council meeting Monday night. As a child, our family would go to Crescent City each year for our vacation after the tsunami in nineteen sixty-four. My parents took me and my sister about a week after the tsunami hit there, and we were devastated at what we saw. So, my heart goes out to you all for what has happened there again. I wish I could be there for moral support, but my health will not permit me to be there at this time, so God bless you and all the, and all God bless Crescent City. Love you all, Jim Gibson." So, I wanted to share that.
Mr. Mayor, I forgot to say a couple of things.
Please.
We have one silver lining in all of this, and that's that our harbor master, Richard Young, is staying, and I'm sure that all of us would agree that our hearts go out to those in Japan.
Very good. Thank you. So, at this time, I'll adjourn the meeting until the next irregular scheduled meeting, April fourth, two thousand and eleven, at five AM, or BM.